You are listening to the award winning The Young Jerks with Mike Crawford.
Welcome to The Young Jerks, back with another show tonight. Free Karen Reed, you see the billboard. Really excited to see this, this is gonna be at the Patriots games. Think it's Route 1 South, we'll find out tonight, I'm sure we'll have some commentary on that. Hopefully, we may hear from Nick Rocco tonight, hopefully. Really happy about this, the Free Karen Reed billboard. I guess three of them are going up, freekarenreed.net. Very exciting to see, this week's gonna be a big week for Free Karen Reed. And we're talking about that tonight, we're gonna talk about what happened in Canton last night, we're gonna play some video, we're gonna take phone calls. And something really cool, I want to thank the donations that have been coming into the show recently. And do something just a little extra tonight. We saw that Turtle Boy Aiden has done fundraisers on his show for Free Karen Reed. And we want to do that tonight, too, we're gonna say any donations that come in tonight through the Cash App. It's Mike Crawford one. On the Cash App, any donations that come in, let's say till midnight, you know what, let's even say by tomorrow morning. When I get up at like 8:00 AM, so from now 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM Eastern Time. Any donations that come in, we're gonna give 50% to Karen Reed, the Karen Reed Defense Fund. So, and we're actually gonna do a raffle, too. So, got just a couple little things, nothing big, nothing big, but if you do make donations on the Cash App tonight. People can put a message, one of the things I'd like you to include is either a phone number or an email, just in case you win the raffle, if you want to be in on the raffle. That will put you into the raffle tonight, if you make any donation tonight, $1, any amount, you will get a chance to win. It's very small, nothing big, we're gonna give away some Young Jerks bumper stickers that we have. And also, Young Jerks t-shirt, we've got the t-shirt, we only have a few of these left, we did these like a silk screen a few years ago. These are like kind of collector's items now, people really want these, there's only a few left. The ones that I have now are large, and I think it's double XL, I think those are the only two, we had two sizes we have left. So if you know, you know, basically, you, once we pick a winner, we'll ask them what size t-shirt they want. But just to let you know, those are the sizes, we don't have any small t-shirts or even mediums at this point. Again, they're like the last of the run, these are, I don't know if we're gonna get these again, we may do something else next time. So we're gonna throw that in as a raffle as well tonight, so 50% of any proceeds, tonight's a fundraiser for Free Karen Reed. I want to step it up more, because I just feel like this has come to a head, there's so much information and coming out, and it looks really good, and then you see the other side with the propaganda on Court TV and these other places. So I feel like we just gotta get louder with the facts and the movement and raise money for Karen Reed. I want to say, good job to Turtle Boy, good job to the Rocos, good job to the Facebook groups for raising the money, especially the people who kicked in and the sponsors, because people have donated items to give away. Amazing, amazing what you have done, you've raised a lot of money, you got this big event going on Friday night that sold out. You have billboards going up, and the big hearing on Friday, and very interesting last night in Canton, what went down. I'm gonna talk about that tonight, we're gonna take your phone calls. Hopefully, we take a bunch of great calls again, last show was amazing with the phone calls. So hopefully, we're gonna talk, take a lot more, I want to take a look at just the comments right now, because I don't even, I want to make sure everything's going good, you guys can all hear me, I haven't checked anything, I don't have anyone backing me up tonight. I'm like freewheeling, but I think I'm ready, I think I'm prepared, I got enough cannabis, oh, and also in the raffle, right? So we got the bumper stickers, we got the t-shirts. I also want to throw in the raffle, if you want to pick up these items for me, if you're local to the North Shore, let's say. And you win the raffle, and you actually want to come pick it up, and you like cannabis, I will also throw in some free cannabis. I can't ship that in the mail, so anyone that is further away or can't come see me, that just wants the t-shirt, the bumper sticker, we will ship that, because we can't, it's federally illegal, we can't, nobody, even legal dispensaries cannot mail cannabis right now. So, that's the deal, but we can give it away, we can gift it to you, definitely for a fundraiser, this is awesome that we can do that now legally. So, I'll also throw that on the table. Just want to see if everyone can hear me, I think everyone can hear me, I think we're doing good, let's just check out some comments right now. People are already talking about Mr. Theodore from last night, we're gonna get to him and everyone else. But they're talking about the Canton Select Board last night, we had a comment come in, I kind of wonder if Mr. Theodore would have dared to speak that way to any of the male speakers who have spoken at earlier sessions. Very true, last night, that's, that's why we're gonna play the video, we're gonna play the video, and maybe some of the other videos I haven't even seen yet, of that, you know, Canton Confidential and some of the other groups have posted. Great stuff, because last night, you have a bunch of women. Mostly looking like, you know, mothers, grandmother age, like, these aren't like high school kids or even college kids, they're, they're older, experienced women. And that's who you saw speaking and asking questions to the Board of Selectmen at the public comment last night. And the way that they were treated by basically a bunch of older, white, just, you know, hacks, they look like, it's just, you know, stereotypical. No, it was, it was not a good look for them, the Select Board last night. Not a good look, you know, if you look up like crisis management, this will be the textbook example of how not to do good crisis management. Look at the Canton Town Hall, the Town Select Board meeting on September 12th, 2023, it goes down in the textbooks, it's like one of the worst ways you can handle crisis management. I got a comment from Jay Mund on YouTube saying, kind of freaked out about Friday, Commonwealth is not backing down. Well, that's the thing on this. It's just so crazy that so much new stuff keeps coming out that helps Karen Reed. And the Commonwealth isn't back in town. Like, I don't see how they could, I don't, I don't know, maybe, like, I think Aiden's put this out there that, you know, he thinks that they're gonna go through the trial and lose. And say she's still guilty, and not charge the cops that did it, like, that's the states, that's what they're hoping for. That's why it seems like the state is hoping for, is that they know probably at this point that they can't win the case. But they're gonna continue the charade that she's guilty when she's not. Which is crazy. But we'll see if it happens, because we don't know, none of us know what the feds are gonna do. Like, we don't know if the feds are gonna act on Thursday, or Friday, or Monday, or six months from now, like, we have no clue on that, that's, that's like the, the sleeping giant, we just don't know. Getting some good comments already. The phone's beeping, please don't text me during the show right now. Hello from Boston, Kristen Marie writes. Hello from Norwood, Melissa. People are texting, I hate this, I'm gonna have to turn off the, oh, they're set, you know what, actually, I love it, these are donations. So let's read the donations, they're not texts, they're donations, my Cash App is gonna be beeping, maybe I should turn, you know what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna turn off the phone lines right now, so it doesn't keep beeping while we're talking. But I will turn it on again later when we start taking calls, that's what I'll do. Perfect, but these are donations, we've already had some donations, so I'm gonna read off some of the donations, and you know what I'm gonna do, too, is I'm gonna keep a tally like Aiden does. See, I'm ripping him off, but this is ripping him off for like a really good cost tonight. Christine Conley sent $40. Melissa N. sent 20, so we're already at 60 bucks. And hopefully, I don't forget to read off some of the donations from the last show, too. We had some donations come in late on the last show, but tonight, we've already had two day, wait. Yeah, two tonight, Christine, 40, Melissa N., 20. So we got two good donations tonight already, 60 bucks, 30 bucks is already going to Karen Reed, I love it, let's, let's try to raise more, hopefully. I'll read some more feedback tonight, hopefully. Yeah, hey, everyone, loved the billboard, yeah, that was so great to get that from Nick Rocco this morning, he's like, did you see the billboard? I was like, where, yeah, I looked immediately on there, billboard was all over social media. Oh my God, you know what, this is perfect, someone just showed up in the, in the green room. You gotta go, you gotta friggin' go, she's in the green room. How excited am I, like, this is what I'm talking about, we're gonna, we gotta bring her up, we're gonna have to bring her up, do you guys know who's in the green room, I think you already do, maybe, do you? I'm quizzing you guys, who's in the green room, you gotta go, you gotta go's in the green room. I want to play the video, who, people are saying, who, they don't know who, you don't know who? No, not, if someone said Aiden, no, not Aiden. Jennifer got it right first, Rita, Rita, it's Rita, and then everyone's calling, Cool Mom Knows, Rita is here, Rita, I've been waiting for this. So tonight, I want to do a couple things, before I bring up Rita, I want to, yeah, Rita is here, exactly, just a, this is a good one, too. Yeah, I've F'n Random Citizen is here, I can't wait to bring her up, before I do that, I want to talk about a couple things, just very quickly. Just ask you guys to do a couple more things for me tonight, let me just do this quickly. This guy right here, is a friend of mine, he's also like, it's funny, because I don't know our politics necessarily agree. And some of the same people we all don't like have probably brought us together, but I love this guy right here. The other day, he just gifted me a bunch of cannabis, he grows cannabis and he gifts it to patients, he has grow videos online, he used to do a podcast, I've been on his podcast, I love it, I want him to do more shows. So if you're into the cannabis scene, and you want advice on growing, you just want to know what's going on, please follow him tonight, he's on Twitter, it's at Hayes Podcast. I'm actually gonna post the Twitter link right now. On all our video chat, so definitely check him out, please, he's a great guy, he's helping people. And his weed is awesome, like, do you see my smile, like, people, the trolls are making fun of me because I'm missing a tooth. Like, I don't, I couldn't help but smile like that much, because I love when people grow quality weed and share it legally, like, that's, I fought for that law to change, and that's the best part of the law right now. Is that someone like Eric can grow amazing weed legally at home. And then share it with other folks like me, so please support him, and if you want advice on growing, if you're into that stuff, check him out. The other thing, Bay State Rock, Bay State Rock is a long, a well-known, local, long-running show. Used to be on a WAAF, it's a local music show forever, it's produced and run by my girlfriend, Carmelita. I've been with her forever, she used to be with AF, and before that, BCN, she's a rock radio DJ, but her claim to fame, and they call her like the local music queen. She had a show forever, playing local music, our podcast is amazing, it's well-produced. If you like local music in Boston, you want to discover the best local music and a really slick show with a legend, my girlfriend, and you want to know more about me and my girlfriend. Please follow her and subscribe on her podcast, just look it up, Bay State Rock, hosted by Carmelita and Tez, who's also awesome. Please check them out and follow them on iTunes, Spotify, everywhere else. Now, let's get to the good stuff, that, that was good, I love that stuff. But I'm gonna actually post their podcast link, too, but I want to get to Rita, I want to get to the really quality stuff that happened last night. It was amazing. We're gonna try to get Rick, Nick Rocco on the phone, we got video, I'm gonna throw up right now.
Comment portion of this meeting will be limited to 15 minutes and three minutes per speaker. Watch some of the coverage, those that do not wish to speak, be mindful of the others in the room who wish to do the same, so that we can make the most of the time allowed.
Let's bring her up, there she is.
Hello.
We're gonna watch a video about what you did last night, which was pretty friggin' crazy, what's going on?
It was crazy.
Crazy good, but crazy good for you guys, crazy bad for them.
Yeah, it was, it was disappointing, it went that way, but it went that way, I mean, they shut us down, you know? They, I think they knew we wanted answers, we wanted to ask questions, and they just battened down the hatches and weren't gonna have it. So.
Did you, did you expect it to be the way it went?
Absolutely not, absolutely not, so, you know, they have not been allowing us to, they don't want, they don't want to ask questions, so the only way to answer, the only way to get them to answer questions is to have an agenda item. And so I submitted one a couple of weeks ago, which is what Tom, which is how we were able to get that opening when we did at the last meeting, to ask questions and get some answers, because if we had an agenda item, we could ask questions and get answers. That was the, you know, public comments, you can't get answers, and so last night, they got wind, I know they got wind, that we were going to take any opportunity for an agenda item to ask questions, and they had an agenda item for a new portal, which is their solution to this problem. And I stood up to comment on that agenda item, and they refused to even acknowledge that I was standing there. And so I had to wait to the public comments section, and then even in the public comments section, when I tried to get them to just go back to that topic, because they didn't give us an opportunity to ask a question. They were like, nope, 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 and then I finally had to ask just for clarification for what he said to get something going. So, they just didn't want, they don't want us there, oh, here comes the rain, I don't know if you can hear that, I'm out on the porch, can you hear that?
I can, but it's fine, it sounds good, actually, no, no, you're fine, stay still, you're, my phone's beeping more than your rain is bothering us. But that's all donations coming in, so it's awesome.
That's good, that's good, I'm happy for you, so, you know, it was just disappointing, because, I mean, look, you know, I talked, I met Tom like a month ago, I think Tom's a great guy, I think he's a decent guy. I think he's being misled by John Conley, who, he's well past his expiration date, well past it. And I think that, you know, the other members of the board, I mean, I do want to give a shout out to JR McCourt, I don't know him either, I've never met him. But he rose to the challenge last night, and he did not agree with adjourned the meeting, and he was the only one who said no. And even the lawyer was sitting in the front, and when the lawyer went up to them and said, okay, get out of here, and then John Conley couldn't get out fast enough. JR McCourt sat there and faced the audience as if that meeting was still going on, and did not agree to the adjournment, so kudos to him. I respect that, it's not easy to do that, especially when you get that peer pressure up there, but, you know, we have to, we have to ask questions, and, you know, we need to get answers, and this is just not leadership, it's not. So, and it was disappointing that, you know, they chose that route, and I think they made them, I think they dug themselves into a deeper hole, because, look, I didn't feel good about it afterwards, even though, you know, I was angry. Of course, I'm gonna get angry, you know, they shut us down, and then he says, I can't get back in line, that wasn't in the, that's, he just made that up on the spot, you know, it's like, I can't get back, I said, all right, I'll get back in line, he goes, no, you can't get back in line. So, it was difficult, it was difficult, but it happened, and we're moving forward, we are not stopping. And we need to get this town, this town back in good organization with good leadership, and, you know, some of them, I think, you know, can do it, and John Conley and Chris Albert, time to go, time to go.
Time to go, you gotta go.
Time to go, yeah, that's, Kristen Anderson was the one that went up and said, you gotta go, dude.
Oh, I thought that was you.
No, Kristen Anderson went up, and she's, and then I went up and said, it's just like the refrigerator, you passed your expiration date, you gotta go.
Yes, you did, you followed up on it, okay, I get it. It's funny, too, because I've been to a lot of city council and select board for so many different issues across the state. Like, in terms of, I've probably been to, I would say about 25, maybe, different cities or towns I've been to for different things, like, especially the cannabis space. But other issues, too, because, you know, I've been an activist for 25 years, and it's amazing, like, to see, like, when I lived in Cambridge. For all the issues with Cambridge, there's a lot of issues with Cambridge, but they let everyone friggin' speak.
Yeah.
They do stick to three minutes, which I think sucks, but they will never shut anyone out.
Yeah.
And especially if they have more time, last night, there was plenty of friggin' time, they were ahead of schedule, I almost missed the thing, I was broadcasting it, I stepped out with my dog, I came back, and it was like, oh my God, it's starting, it was like, they were at least a half hour, if not more, ahead of schedule, weren't they?
Yes.
So they had plenty of time.
Right.
They could have let everyone speak, and they could have, when the city or town, in this case, is in crisis. I've been in those situations or those rooms, when your city or town is in crisis, you let people have their speech, and you, you let them go overtime, like, it's a smart thing to actually do, is let people vent, let people communicate, respond to them. And you know what, like, and especially the leadership of like, the concerned citizens. Like, it's very common that, even at state hearings, you'll see that certain people get put up first to the testimony, and they get more time than everyone else. It's because of who they are, and they're representing more people, and I feel like what I saw in Canton was so fucking amateur. It's like, dude, you're in a crisis, get your shit together, get your shit together, your pants, you're exposed, like, your pants are down, like, all you men looked like shit last night, like, so.
Right.
That, to me, that's my experience, I just couldn't believe what I was seeing last night, like, you know, especially after, this wasn't the first meeting, do you know what I mean, like, they knew this was coming. There already been all this stuff that's already happened, I could see if it was like the first time you've ever had people show up and be concerned, but this is not, this is what, the third, fourth, fifth?
This is the third meeting I've been to.
Yeah.
And it was, I mean, you know, I've worked with all sorts of people before, but, you know, for me, this exposes issues wrong with our government. I mean, we have people not qualified in positions of management, and, you know, we, we asked for crisis management, we, we know this is a hot issue, and it's falling on deaf ears, and, you know, we need intervention, we've asked for intervention. And they're just not responding, I don't think they know what to do, I don't think that they, they just want us to go away, and that solves nothing. They need to listen, and Tom told me, you know, a month or so ago, he said that, oh, I have flexibility, I can let you guys run longer, and, you know, he wanted to talk about healing, and what Tom doesn't understand is, when you have a wound, and the wound is gaping, you've got to clean the wound out before you can heal. And he's not allowing us to clean the wound out, he just wants to make it go away, and then, you know, put the sun in the sky and make it look like a beautiful day, and it's not. So, it was really disappointing, really disappointing, I mean, they cut Kathleen off, Kathleen is an excellent, excellent speaker, and she has never offended anybody, she's speaking truth, and he cut her off mid-sentence. And that's what, that's what really pushed it over, you know, is when he did that, that was disrespectful, and I'm surprised Tom did that, but I think, you know, I think they're nervous, I think we make them uncomfortable, I don't think they're used to women especially. You know, like me, I like the people that are there, I mean, we have voices, and we are using our voices, and we are stating facts, and I'm not sure, I know, there's no way they used to, that kind of environment, and, but they need to get used to it, because it's not going away.
Got a lot of comments and questions coming in for you, Rita, number one, people want to know if you could.
This is my first live show, I've accidentally.
So, number one question people are asking, and I think I know the answer, because we talked about this, but people want to know if you'll share the speech that you were trying to give last night, that they wouldn't allow you to finish.
Oh, you know the answer, no, I would love to share it, but, of course, if I put it, if I say what I'm gonna say, they're gonna be prepared, so they're not even gonna let me talk next time, but, my, what I'm gonna say, I had another section that was talking about integrity and credibility, and, you know. I'll just say it, what the heck, it doesn't matter, you know, John Conley said at the last Board of Select meeting that he didn't know Chris Albert, and he tried to distance himself, John Conley's been in this town for, he graduated in 1978, he graduated the same year I graduated, he graduated Canton, I graduated another town, he's been here, as long as I, you know, I've been here, I know his name, I don't know him. And, you know, he tried to distance himself from Chris Albert, and, you know, all the things that happened were his responsibility to know as the selectman, he just didn't live here as a random, an FRC, we say FRC. And he just didn't live here as an FRC like me and everybody else, you know, he lived here, he was the selectman, it was his responsibility to know in 1995 that Chris Albert killed somebody in a hit-and-run accident, which shoved the car into a concrete medium. His car slid 200 feet, and then he took off, and didn't render aid or anything, and, you know, those things had been mentioned, he knew that, he knew Chris Albert and his financial issues, tax lanes, it was his job as the Board of Selectmen to know all that. You know, and the other things with local businesses having to file lawsuits to get money for oil, you know, John knew this stuff, and, and there's no, and if he didn't, then he's more incompetent than he's demonstrating. So, the fact that he endorsed Chris Albert is disgusting, and he duped this town into voting for somebody that was not qualified for, he's not qualified for anything. And word has it, because of all these people that are following them, that Chris Albert's doing his own food deliveries anymore, I guess the kid that ran out and gave somebody the middle finger last week, I'm sure he's still employed, but, you know, he's hurting, he's hurting, and he should. So, you know, I never knew Chris Albert before, but the more I heard about him, the more I, it's wrong, and I have to, I have, I've never been an activist, never been an activist. But, you know, in the last several years, things that have gone on in this country, I really raised my awareness to government and what's going on, and, you know, I just, I was compelled to speak up, compelled to speak up for Karen, and then when it went to the board, it was my calling, I had to speak up. And I will continue to speak up until we right this ship, so.
Now, another common question people are asking, is Rita gonna run for selectman next time, a select person?
It's not, it's, politics has never been something, I've been in the business world, I work my semi-retirement job, which I absolutely love, I'm not in leadership anymore. And, you know, there's a part of me that wants to do it, because it's, it's my calling, it's what I've done my whole career, my whole career, I transformed business areas from the ground up, or, or poorly performing areas, and turned them into successes, incredible success, record success, that's what I've done. In the last eight years of my professional career, I worked with the state offices, and I saw the disconnects and how they were so different, so far behind the business world, but, my dad is 90, and my dad has had health issues this last year, he actually almost died last year, he was a breath away from death. And I nursed him back to health, and we celebrated his 90th birthday here in my backyard, which, in Canton, which is his hometown, his home, he doesn't live in Canton, but this is where his heart is. And I don't think I have the bandwidth for it, so that's where I am right now, a week ago, I wanted to say I don't have the bandwidth for it, today, I say, I don't think I have the bandwidth for it. So, but, you know, I'm hoping that somebody comes out of the woodwork and says, I'll do it, and I got to tell you, I'm getting messages left and right from people I don't even know who are supporting us, and who are, who had supported John Conley, and are no longer supporting him. So he is, so he won last night, because I know that was staged by John, he won the battle, but he lost the war, he will never get elected again, he will never get elected again, so he, he won't, his term, I think, is up in 2025, and he is looking at his last election, that I can promise you. he won't. His term, I think is up in twenty twenty-five and he is looking at his last election. That I can promise you.
Have you heard from anyone that might run? Like, uh, has there been any talks of people running?
No, but I got to tell you, the tone of that meeting last night has really, uh, changed people's minds. And the messages, the private messages that I'm getting, people are not happy with the performance of the select board. They're just not. And, um, you know, it's time for change. So my hope is that somebody out there will run and will step in. And we really need more than one. We need two. Uh, for both John Conley and Chris Albert. We are going to move forward on a recall for both of them. Uh, so John Conley, if you're watching, we're, we're, we're coming for you. And, uh, we're not going to tolerate it. And we know that we can't get a new, new people in there until April, because that's just the way the timeline works. But, um, he's looking at his last days as a select person. I can tell you that.
People also want Angela for select board too. Maybe she'll run. I mean, we need a bunch of, no matter what, it better be, uh, women. Like that's what I want to see. I want to see women just take over the select board because you'll fix it. I know you will.
Oh, we will. Oh, we, this, this job's right up my alley. I mean, it's right up my alley, but it's like, it's not, you know, it's not what I was looking to do at this point in my life.
Yeah. But I think it's a calling now. I, I think that, I hope you're like willing to listen to the universe and listen to people because I think whether it's you or like you're, or whether you're backing somebody, it's going to happen. Like there's something has to happen here.
Oh, something has to happen. It, because it's, it's, it's just, it's horrible. The incompetence is horrible. And like I say again, J R McCourt, Bravo, Bravo, Bravo. He's a hero. And if I could just put another plug out there, Lucky Lawford, hero. He has.
Yeah. Yeah. I love Lucky. I, I, I'm just, after reading all that stuff, especially after the state police came out to see him, it's like, Lucky, Lucky's a good dude. I hope, I hope that good things happen to Lucky.
His brother's on the select board. So Mike, if you're listening, please take a lesson from your brother. He's got it. He's got, he's going down in history as a hero, a Canton hero. And I couldn't be more proud of her. If I saw Lucky right now, I don't even know him. I'd go up and hug and kiss him.
Maybe we should get Lucky to run.
Yeah, yeah. Get Lucky to run. He is a hero. And we love him. We love anybody that tells the truth and has the courage to tell the truth when against such adversity.
Uh, someone said, maybe Karen Reed can run along with Turtle Boy Lucky. Imagine. Oh my God, that would be hilarious. I don't know. I don't, Turtle Boy would have to move to, uh, move the, uh, yeah, Canton. I think Karen, well, yeah. So, uh, this is funny. Someone says, let's make Canton great again. Uh, do you, do you want to hang out and watch them? Have you watched the, like, the public comment? Have you seen it since like it happened? Or have you just not seen, watched the video?
I watched it. So today's my fiance's birthday. So I was living with him, what I could do today. And then I told him after this, you know, I'd spend some time with him. But I did watch a little bit. I, I did watch it. And yeah, I did watch it. But if you want to play it, go ahead and play it. I mean.
Do you want to watch some of it with us?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Awesome. This is always fun. We can give commentary on these turkeys while they're, uh, acting up. If I could figure out how to add it again, let me see. Oh no, this is easy. Hold on. I'm going to these guys.
To hear as many people as possible. Anyone who does not wish to speak or is, are able to speak, uh, due to the time limit may submit their comments or writing to the, for the, uh, board's review and considerations. So with that, we will open up the public meeting, uh, public comment section.
Before we start the public comments, I just wanted to go back to a couple of the committee assignments. So I just don't want us to cut into my time.
So I'm, I'm sorry. It's, it's, it's out of order. We've already voted.
Imagine that.
No, I'm not questioning that. I just wanted to ask a question.
A point of order, ask, you know, clarification is not out of order. It's like, so like amateur hour.
It's like, nope, nope, no questions, no questions.
It's like, uh, it reminds me of when you, uh, I don't know. I don't want to be all against people from foreign countries that do customer service, but, but it's like that. It's like, are we talking the same language here? It's like, it's like, this doesn't make sense. It just, you know.
Showed their terror. That showed terror. They were terrified of our questions. What you see there is terror. That's what it is. They were, they just, oh my God, don't let them ask questions. Oh my God, we're, we're just going to keep it in the public comment section because we know we can sit here like statues. And during the agenda portion, the citizens have a right to ask questions. And they just went right by it. And they, they said, nope, we're going. And so when I went, I, that's why I didn't want them to take it out of my three minutes. I go, wait a minute, before you do that, I go, I'm going to go back to the agenda where you didn't let me ask the question. So.
It's crazy.
That's their fear, the level of fear they have.
Uh, people are asking me to turn up the volume on the video. Uh, we paused it right now, but I can't. I mean, that's the maximum the video goes. So I agree. The volume wasn't that great on this hearing, but it gets better, I think, at certain points, especially when the speakers, you know, I think the select board, they mumble, they don't want to, they're.
Oh, absolutely.
They don't want to be heard.
And at the end it gets louder.
Yeah.
So people won't have a hard time hearing that.
Let's watch some of this goodness. There's some, because there's some crazy moments. I love this indeed.
So because you didn't, didn't give us an opportunity to ask a question during that agenda item, which you're not going to let me ask a quick question now.
So as I mentioned, we are going to bring that back. Uh, we've taken it under advisement. So there will be another opportunity.
What I heard is that no member of the board is going to be on the CASA. I just want to make sure I heard that correctly. Is that what I heard?
That, uh, CASA is not required to have a select board member. Yes.
Is not required.
Correct.
But you're going to take it under advisement to see if you will put somebody on that?
Nope. No.
So you're going to leave it with no one?
Uh, we are going to talk about it at a future meeting, what the assignments for the subcommittees will be.
Okay. And, and, and so the board will cons, I mean, I'm surprised that the board is not allowed or doesn't have to have a presence on that because I would think that Canton Alliance Against Subs Abuse, the highest leaders here would be, want to be involved.
So it's not a question of wanting to be involved. When the, the board was formed.
Yeah.
Uh, a select board member was not a requirement for that board. So there were several committees that exist that do not require a select board rep.
Right. But things change.
Yes.
Okay.
So that, that's not to say that we won't have a select board rep on CASA, but it's not a requirement.
Okay.
But you will have a chance to discuss that at a future meeting when we talk about that.
Thank you. Okay. Rita Lombardi, Eight Kings Road. Um, and I'm just going to ask, you know, I spent three days gathering my thoughts so that I could present them productively to you guys. And I just asked that I not be interrupted. Uh, and I get the respect that we give you guys. So, um, anyways, I just want to say that all of you represent, um, Canton's Board of Select, which is the highest level of town government that we have. And when you campaigned, you told voters that you were qualified to lead this town. Voters put their trust in you and voted you to this highest level of government leadership. Now more than ever, we need you to show your leadership. Sitting there silent, ignoring the pleas of your constituents and giving us excuses of why you are unable to answer our questions. And just like you just did right now, you're, you're just firmly not going to answer questions. That's not leadership. Okay. It's just not. And I have been fortunate in my life to spend thirty-five years in professional leadership, progressive experience, transforming service organizations. I've been very lucky and blessed to have that career. I'm in my semi-retirement years now and I'm not doing that anymore, but I have a tremendous amount of experience in that. Leading people can be very exciting and rewarding, and it can also be very challenging. In challenging times, especially in times of crisis, true leaders will bite the bullet and get out in front of their teams as quickly as possible and actively listen and respond to their concerns. Even when it feels it's just impossible to do. True leaders find the courage and they do it. When leaders refuse to be transparent or listen and respond to their team's issues, the issues don't go away. We're not going away because our issues are not getting resolved. Effective communication and integrity are two vital competencies in leadership. When citizens appear before you in these meetings, expressing serious concerns about the lack of trust that they have with the board and the Canton Police Department, instead of facilitating healthy dialogue, um, and conversation, citizens have been disrespected, interrupted, disparaged, silenced, and requests for transparency are, are ignored. Without productive conversations, issues will continue to escalate. It's just the way they are. In professional businesses, which is where my background is, when businesses raise issues, when issues are raised that don't have immediate resolutions, it is noted in an open agenda item that an issue was brought forward and it needs resolution. And that is notated. And then the following meeting, you get, the, the board gets back to you or the management gets back to you and tells you what the status is. We haven't experienced any of that. Our stuff is going into a black hole. Reaching out, just.
I'm sorry, we've limited to three minutes and we're going to, we're going to be firm on this.
I'm sure somebody who will give me their three for, for, I only have another couple of minutes. And this is Mr. Theodore. Mr. Theodore, I put a lot of time into this and I know what I'm saying is not pleasant. And I don't think anyone here. Okay. I'd like to finish.
But I, we, we're sticking to the three minutes.
Okay. I'm, I'd like to finish.
No problem with what you're saying, but we, we're going to be stay firm on this.
So let me just finish this thought and then I'll get back in line.
You're only going to speak once. There's only going to.
So now I'm hearing that I'm being stifled because you, I am being stifled. Mr. Theodore, we are, you, we are presenting stuff to you.
There's other people that might want to speak. So that's why we're limited to three minutes.
These people want to say the same thing. Okay. We are, we are here because you're not listening to us.
Thank you. Thank you.
No, 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 thank you. I don't think.
Now you're out of order. Thank you. It was three minutes. I'm.
You know, this is disappointing. And, and you know, I'm going to just tell you, this, we're going to get louder. We're going to get louder.
Next.
Tara Schuman, I live in Canton. Um, I don't, I just want to ask, I know you can't answer it now, but, um, just put forth that I don't fully understand when there's an agenda item. If, are you allowed to get up when that item is up and offer a comment on that item? Because I've actually seen different things happen. I've done that in the past. When the item was up, I spoke at that time and was acknowledged. Um, and so I would just like some clarity at a future date, like when the committee assignments came up, I stood up at the microphone. No one was looking up. Maybe you didn't see me. Um, but then we went on. So I think just some clarity in terms of like, understanding how the meeting works. If, when the agenda item is on, we can get up and comment on that, or is that not allowed? And we need to wait till public comment. So that's my first thing I'd like to explain. The second thing I'd like to explain, there's three, um, is that when you just acknowledged the CASA question I had from last week, I think part of the issue is that you acknowledged it, but I still don't unfortunately feel heard. Because what I got as a response was we don't need a person on that committee. Therefore, Chris Albert is not on that committee. What I was expressing was a little deeper than that. And it was public, well, um, it was really for you to hear that there are concerns that a leader has been put in a position that he would not be qualified to serve. By your response, I don't hear that you heard me. And that therefore, while I appreciate that you acknowledged it, I still very much feel unheard. My last comment, um, is something I'm not exactly familiar with, but something that I sit here and has bothered me for a long time. And I've done some research on it. Um, I am bothered by the fact that our American flag is covered by that screen. I have looked into the flag etiquette law. I actually don't think that it exactly breaks it. But I feel really uncomfortable sitting here and would really ignore, and really would like the board to think about how we could rearrange this room such that the IT, um, is not hanging in front of our American flag. And if we could also acknowledge maybe other things that could be wrong with the code that when I looked at the code, um, I had concerns about.
Thank you. Thank you.
Kathleen Howley, I'm Canton.
Before she starts, I want to ask you a question that came up Rita. People are asking, uh, one person did in the comments about, looked like you were getting some pushback after you got off, you know, got off the mic there in the crowd or maybe even later.
Oh, no. Oh, no.
Was there any pushback?
Oh God, no. There was pushback at the end after he adjourned. But no, no, there was no pushback. I sat down. You know, we go there, week after week, people sit where they sit. Um, and you know, everybody speaks for themselves. So, um, I was speaking for myself and people know me. I'm passionate about what I have to say. Um, and I'm not one to be bullied and I'm certainly not one to be silenced. If I have something to say and I feel it's important, I'm going to use my voice and say it. And, um, no, I, there was absolutely no pushback. What I did is I got up and I gave Kathleen, um, I had two more things I wanted to say. So I gave Kathleen one of them. If she had time to get it out, you know, um, on her three minute block, which she did.
Awesome. So, um, in the audience, do you feel like there were any Albert people or was it just all?
Oh, yeah. The woman that argued with me at the end, she was a plant. Okay. Lady, we know you're a plant. We were trying to figure out your name and we're going to find it out. But anyways, yeah, she was, um, she was definitely with the Alberts. And I guess she had some words with somebody. But the Albert and the McCabe's and the O'Keefe's for most, they're not there. Uh, but this person was definitely there to stir up trouble. And, um, she didn't get what she was looking for. I did argue, you know, not argue, I just yelled back at her. But, um, you know, and there was also, uh, a retired detective sitting in the front row that I'm told, I don't know some of these people, but I was told there was a retired detective in the front room. And he was next to the lawyer who I think was giving them advice as well. So, um, you know, these guys are scared. They're scared. But no, we're, you know, there was no pushback from anybody. And it's not fact, that, uh, when I got home and even today, I mean, my, the Facebook, the comments, uh, my messages, everything's blowing up in complete support.
That's what I'd say too, because I, I mean, I posted the video last night. Like I, you know, I, I went live without even, you know, telling anyone I was going live. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
When we do that, we don't get as many listeners on the live. But it, it blew up, like even during the live, like it went from like not many listeners to a lot of, at the end, people were just like, and then I, I just came back to it, looked at the video later and it blew up. Like it was like, and other people had posted the same stream, like Canton Confidential had posted it and they posted a bunch of clips and, and everybody is like, wow, these guys are all idiots. Like Rita, go Rita, go Rita, go, go the woman of Canton. So, I mean, that's, that's what you're, it just totally seems like anyone watching that with an unbiased mind saw that. But I, I was just wondering if there was any kind of, uh, like you said, plants, any, any plants there? I like that word.
She's up there with a plant, you know, and, 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 you know, my style's not for everybody. And you know, some people have different styles and, um, but my style works for me. I mean, I've had an incredible career because of my style. And you know, sometimes I rock the boat and you know, sometimes I knock it over. You know, I'm here to get results and that's what I've always done my whole life is get results.
I love it. Cause I'm the same way Rita. I'm not like NPR voice and, but I've always been, let's get something friggin' done. Let's get some results. What can we actually do? Like that's all, I hate the pie in the sky stuff where you, it's like, dude, we, that's bullshit. That's never going to happen. Like, maybe if we actually do some stuff beforehand, we could actually do your crazy idea, but we gotta, you know, focus on what we can get done. Like, uh, and I, I think you rocked it. I love, I love you focusing like you, you just, you know, your strengths. You've, it worked, it's worked for you. It's working now. It's obvious it's working. You're a star. Everyone. I mean, I've been talking about you. I'm so excited you're here tonight. So there you go.
Thank you. And I, you know, I just started this just by doing the right thing. I wasn't, I'd never, if you asked me three months ago, if I thought any of this was happening. I mean, you know, I had heard about this case, which is what started it. And at first I was like, no, you know, it's defense stuff and you know, that's what I just fucked it off. And then someone said to me, you've got to, you've got to watch Turtle Boy. And, um, then when I, my eyes were popping because it, it's not gossip. It's the case facts. It's the state's case. So I had to speak up and now here we are.
Awesome. Looks like we have a, something I usually don't hear. Hello from Mexico.
I just saw that.
Yeah. Uh, someone, uh, long-term listener saying, this felt like a cannabis control committee public meeting. Yeah, in a way, even, even like probably the, there was one that was really wild back in the day. It kind of felt like that, but even worse. This is like even worse than that, worse cannabis control. And even some of the ones recently cannabis control commission have been wild, but this is just another level. This is just something, you can't even compare it to that stuff.
You can't, I mean, yes. I mean, Pete, and I'm hoping that, you know, because I know people in Mexico and wherever watching this, and I think I said it earlier. I, people need, when I was in my twenties and thirties, I would call my mom, okay, mom, who should I vote for? You know, I wasn't interested, but we're at a different place in this country. And when you look at this board, people should look in their own states, their own towns and really pay attention to who's in charge and making decisions. Because you own the decisions they make.
Got a comment here says, I can't get on Canton Confidential. Can you share what the response was there and how many on there? I mean, I think there's, I don't know, three, four thousand people on there at least, but people loved it. I mean, they loved Rita, they loved the citizens, they didn't like their select board. I mean, that's what I saw. Is that what you saw in Canton Confidential?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. People, people are commenting that they've been in this town for decades. And they even voted for John Connally and they've lost confidence. And John Connally is clueless. And, you know, I don't like to disparage people, but he's clueless. And I don't have to say anything because he shows us every meeting, he's clueless. And people have lost faith in him. He, I don't know how he sat on the board for 34 years because I see a man, I'm not even sure I see a man. I see someone who is out of touch with reality.
Well, he did that way because no one goes to the meetings or hearings. No one pays attention unless you have, you know, zoning. Let's try to get a building done or a business. I mean, no one, and when that happens, you just get friendly or donate some money to a guy like John Connally. And that's, that's how he gets by, like, you know. So it's funny because there's a question right here. Were there any hot mic moments last night? There were, and we're gonna get to those.
He did it again. He did it again.
John Connally had a hot mic moment. You want to comment on that?
Yeah. So I have to listen to it again, but he's, it was right at the end and he goes, he said something like, see, I told you, or something like that. Like he was boasting. And for me, it sounded like, you know, like, oh, it's something like this is how you get it done or something like that. I'm not sure the exact word. Somebody probably put him in the, see, he said, see, this is what I'm talking about. That's what he said. See, this is what I'm talking.
See what I'm talking about, to a woman. Who was on the, what, the school board?
No, yeah, he said, this is what I'm talking about. So I think.
Oh, that was, that was about the public here. Yeah. Cause there was another section too where he, he, like he was nasty to someone too, like,
I think somebody posted an old clip.
Was that an old clip?
I think somebody posted an old clip where he was sitting at the head of the table.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's an old clip. I didn't look at it.
See, because I didn't watch the whole select board meeting. I thought maybe that happened earlier, the meeting before the public comment. But you're right. Yeah. And I, I'm sorry to interrupt you because I, I want you to, what did John Connally say in the true hot mic moment last night? Again, you said it earlier.
So he said, see, this is what I'm talking about. And John Connally, and for you Canton citizens that are out there, he has referred to his constituents who are sitting in front of him as a mob. So he tells people we're a mob. And so I think that comment was either, see, they're a mob, or this is what I'm talking about, meaning this is how you shut them down.
And this is why he doesn't want public comment. Cause like that's a new thing and the Canton Select Board now is public comment, right? You guys push for that? Is that?
Well, public comment is there, but, you know, I mean, who's ever taken, we've never had, this is unprecedented. And they don't know what to do. And John Connally, you know, isn't, he has no clue. He has no clue. So I think he was either saying, you know, this is, see, this is what I'm talking about, meaning they're a mob. Or this is how you shut down the meeting. And, but, you know, he directed it. There's no question. He directed that. Every time there's a dilemma, Tom Theodore looks at John for direction. And Tom, if you're listening, that is not good. So please stop listening to John. Like I told you when I met you, if you don't get rid of these two anchors, if we don't get rid of them, they will pull the whole board down. And that was in my speech that they didn't allow me to say. I was gonna say that when you don't address performance issues in leadership, they pulled the rest of the team down. And that's what's happening.
Let me ask, let me ask about Tom Theodore, because like, have you asked him to ask those guys to resign? Like, because I know that you want.
When I met him, I met him, I didn't, I didn't even know, you know, I, I met him accident, well, not accidentally, I, I met him. And we realized who we each were and we, and I said, Tom, they're going to, they need to go. And, or they're gonna take you down with them. And, and I said that from my heart and that was the first time I ever met him. And he did tell me that they won't resign. And.
But he could, he could publicly request that they resign. Like, like, why isn't he doing that?
Yeah.
Why isn't he doing that?
Yeah.
Like that, that would be leadership to say, you know what dudes? I don't care if you don't want to resign. I'm asking you, I'm gonna put it in the friggin' paper. I'm gonna go on the Young Jerks, I'm gonna go on Aiden's show, I'm gonna friggin', I'm gonna announce it to the world. These guys need to go. Like, make a frigga campaign, dude.
Right. And, and Tom, you know, and I think, you know, I, I think that Tom, you know, feels bad. Chris has been there for a while. I mean, I'm speaking for Tom based on my conversation with him. You know, John's been there. I mean, you know, I mean, I want to be kind. But when I look at John Connally and I look at me and we're both the same age, it blows my mind. It blows my mind that this man is where he is right now. It really does. He, I, I'm trying to be kind. So, you know, I'm trying to be kind. We're on live, so you can't cut it, but I, I think a first grader could solve a problem better than he could.
Yeah, it's, it's really, it's at a point.
Yep. He was giddy. He was giddy. He knew what was going down. He was giddy. And he was even talking a lot. And I said to myself, this isn't, this isn't, something's going down. And he was giddy. He really was. And he was talking and, and then they got the baseball, the, you know, the baseball league, they're gonna have a celebration for, which I'm all for. And they're, my fiance said that they said they're gonna get another venue. I thought they said they were gonna have it there. I don't really know. I don't see how they can have it there. But we've asked for another venue to have citizens talk and it's just going boom, in one ear and out the other. And that's all we want is to talk. The police chief, we asked her, she will only meet with us one-on-one. Well, that's, what's, that's a stall tactic. And so then we heard that she'll go, oh, two-on-one. Okay, well, that's not gonna get anything done. It's like the house is on fire and you're gonna use a friggin' garden hose, you know? And she met with 50 people at the Canton Town, older women, you know, at the Canton Town Club. And then she met with about 50 people at the Senior Citizen Center. But the regular citizens, she is only gonna meet with one-on-one. And that kind of inconsistency really erodes trust.
Unbelievable.
It does. It is.
Let's play a little more video. There is one question that keeps coming up. People want to know why Chris wasn't there. Chris Albert wasn't in attendance last night. I believe it was because he was, said he was sick. Is that correct?
No. They were talking about, and I got there a few minutes late, but what they said was somebody was supposed to appear and present or something and that person was sick. No, it lacked transparency. They did not explain Chris's absence. But I think they know, they know, and when Tom and I did speak, we did agree that John and Chris are distractions. So, you know, I'm not trying to throw Tom under the bus, but Tom agreed with me that they're distractions. And we cannot move forward as long as we have people like John and Chris there. But I think the reason Chris wasn't there is because he's a distraction. And they knew that they were gonna shut us down and it was one less thing. It probably worked out better that Chris wasn't there because Chris doesn't add anything to it anyways. He just sits there and doodles.
Some comments coming in. Let's play some more of this video. What I want to hear is when John makes an ass out of himself again.
He does. He does it all the time.
And I understand you're not gonna answer a question, but just correct me if I'm wrong. I think you just said that you recommended that Mr. Albert be appointed to the traffic committee. Mr. Albert, as you know, as we all know, he went to jail in 1995 for vehicular homicide and for leaving the scene of a fatal accident. He was on the lam for 30 hours costing taxpayers untold amounts for a massive manhunt. And I would say that there are two mistakes here. One, appointing a man who is pictured all over Facebook, drinking with underage people, teenagers, to CASA. First of all, what an insult to the recovery community. And now you're going to put him on the traffic committee after he went to jail for killing somebody driving. So I just think, and I, I understand that you guys don't see what the problem is with that, with either one, right? And CASA does deserve the respect of having a select board member, not one who encourages underage drinking. They deserve that respect. And I'm, I'm just, I think it's sad that you can't give it to them. And I want to also say, the last part of Rita's, and she did have more, but citizens have repeatedly requested that the select board schedule a meeting between concerned citizens and the Canton Police Department. Chief Rafferty has only committed to one-on-one meetings and recently we heard that she might consider two-on-one. So she's doubled it. Chief Rafferty refuses to meet with groups of citizens, but we are aware that she recently met with upwards of 50 people at the Canton Town Club, I think it was a women's club meeting, and people at a similar amount at the senior center to discuss town issues. So why won't she meet with us in a group of that size? So this inconsistent message further erodes trust. And we're asking you to reach out to Chief Rafferty and ask her as her bosses and that we are the people paying the salaries, that she meet with concerned citizens. And I would lastly like to say, you know, I, we're all paid taxes here. We may not, you know, like many minors escrow. And I called to find out, what are my taxes now? Cause I'm just paying my mortgage bill. It was quicker to call here. I got the nicest person, the most efficient person and the most professional person. And that's the service I always get when I come to town hall. Workers who make things run, who are, who are respectful to taxpayers, who are lovely people and who are good, efficient workers. And that's 95% of the workers in Canton. And we love them. And we would never say to them, like, we pay your salary and all that stuff. We say when we're not happy because they deserve the respect that comes with a job well done. They are supporting our property values. Because people want, it's more desirable when you live in a well-run town. It's not desirable when you live in a town that is full of scandals and has gotten black eyes and is, you know, a ridic, we're the object of ridicule throughout the state and throughout the nation. I was on the phone the other day with someone said, where do you live? Oh, just.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Unbelievable.
We've had the three minutes.
Wow.
Thank you.
Wow.
We're not being rude, but we, we was.
I mean, that's such hack too, like, we just aired a cannabis control commission hearing. We air a lot of different hearings. I've go to hearings. Almost every single hearing. They'll have a buzzer.
Yeah.
They'll let people know, you have 10 more seconds, Ben. Then it'll go again. And they still let people go. Like, it's kind of just like, you know, it's, it's not that strict, number one, and you actually give them a little bit of leeway. You know, like, there's no warning here. She's in the middle of a friggin' sentence. Like, you couldn't even let her finish her friggin' sentence.
That's what, that's what sparked the outrage.
That's fucking rude. That's fucking rude, dude. That's why people hate you.
Right.
Learn, learn how to do your friggin' job. You guys don't know what you're doing. Like, take some tutorials, learn how to friggin' run a meeting and not be rude to people.
Exactly. And they, you know, I mean, I own my behavior. And I don't apologize for it. It's how I felt. But Tom Theodore, at the encouragement of John Connally, is what sparked that last night. He's responsible. Those two are responsible because they are the ones who, they are the ones who worked together with the attorney to stop us. And she, that was so rude. She was in the middle of a sentence and she is such an incredible.
She's very well spoken. Like, I want to hear what, I wanted to hear what she had to say. Like, cut the shit, dude. No one wants to hear you guys. Ah, it's, it's, it's like, you know, I host a show. When I first started, I used to talk over people too much. My girlfriend would be like, listen to your show. I still do sometimes. I talked over Turtle Boy when he first came on.
Yeah.
I got excited, but mostly I just, yeah, you gotta shut up and let people speak their mind. Like, it's just, you gotta listen. These guys aren't listening.
No.
They're looking at a friggin' timer. We are a moron.
And the interesting thing is, they didn't follow the timer for their own agenda.
Yeah.
Time their agenda items.
No, they didn't.
Ahead of schedule, but then.
They were way ahead of schedule.
And I'm gonna throw one more thing out there just because. So they always had the meetings at 5:30. And, well, they didn't always, but at some point they changed it to 5:30 and, and, you know, I mean, it's not unreasonable to imagine that they probably did it so that less citizens could be there. Well, I recently found out that when the meetings were at 5:30, before everything heated up last spring, John Connally and his buddies would go over to the waterfall afterwards drinking. And so that appears to be what the conflict was for the 5:30 meeting. And now, you know, I guess he just wanted to get out quicker. Word has it that one of his buddies was at the waterfall waiting for him.
Gotta get that beer in, gotta have some fun. About the fun, he's like, these guys are like 50-year-olds on the, on the select board. They can't manage their money. They don't have a manager meeting. They don't know how to not be rude to women who are awesome, by the way. I mean, it can be one thing if they're obnoxious, but you, you guys are like, you care about your town more than the select board does. It's so friggin' obvious.
Everyone's speaking from the heart.
There's a good comment. They said they treated you like it was the Gong Show, like.
It felt like the Gong Show. It felt like the Gong Show. And then that woman that got up after Kathleen, I mean, that's when we, that's when, that's when it just was like, it was outrageous. And it was like, I'm not, I'm not sitting here. I'm not sitting here taking this. I felt like we were bullied. And, you know, I've never tolerated bullying in my life and I never will. And I just won't. It's just not in my butt. And I grew up with three brothers and so, you know, I do not tolerate bullying. And when they did that to her, that just pushed me over the edge.
I think that's what, next select board meeting, we should, like, I think, I think hopefully more people are gonna show up. I think that might happen. And I think that we, they should all have an after-party at the waterfall.
Yes, exactly.
We can take photos of, of the, of their, you know, what, what they're drinking over there.
Right.
Throw them off the journal blog.
You know, and word has it, they're gonna, not, they're gonna eliminate the public comment section for the next select board meeting. So I have that from a reliable source that they're just, now they're just gonna completely cut us off. So then.
Maybe it's time to do a protest to get arrested. Honestly, like, like seriously, like, guys, you want to arrest a bunch of women?
Right. They're just, they, these people, I've never seen people spiral, a death spiral so fast by their lack of management, you know? Now they're gonna cut off the public comments and.
But we're gonna cut out, we're gonna cut off his, his drinking in, in public in peace. Like, I think that we, the people should be in his face taking pictures of him, like, you know, let's make their life uncomfortable.
Well, people know where they're, John's going around town in different watering holes. Now he's at the Hillside Pub. If anybody wants to go there, that's at the bottom of Blue Hills.
Yeah, everyone's gonna start stalking him, passing him around. And you know he'll, you know, now that we said these places, he's gonna find another spot, but we'll, we'll find out, John.
Oh, it will be in Canton. Make room instead. It will be in Canton.
Yeah, well, I wonder why. I wonder why, John. There's also another comment that keeps coming up. People say he has police lights on his car. Is that true?
Well, I don't know for a fact, but somebody said that one day he was walking or whatever and he dropped out a police badge. There was a police badge in his wallet and he has police lights on his car. I don't know how true that is. And then somebody, I believe, looked it up and said that the selectmen are honorary policemen or something or rather. And maybe he could have that, you know, maybe it was okay that he had that. I, I, I don't know. I mean, if, you know, if I was on the select board, which I'm not, but if I was, I don't need a badge. I don't need a badge. I just go and do my job. I don't need a badge to pump up my ego. I just don't.
That's bizarro, if that's true.
It is. Oh, I think it is true. Cause more than one person said it. I think it is true.
So let's play more of this video. Let's see where it gets even worse here. These nitwits, it's where it's good.
This is a democracy. We have freedom of expression in the Constitution.
All right, I'm asking for the German in this meeting. If this continues, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask for the German.
Yep.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Don't adjourn this meeting or you will be sorry.
Motion's been made. Any seconded? Not seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
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 You're afraid of the taxpayers.
The brave ones didn't say aye. And thank you. This is a great, this is my leadership and you guys are making it worse. You're making it worse. And we're not gonna stop. This is a great, this is my leadership. And you guys are making it worse. You're making it worse. And we're not gonna stop.
This is what we're talking about.
We're paying for your health insurance, right? Where the taxpayer is paying for your health.
We don't, we don't have health insurance.
And you are shutting us down. And you guys look like cowards right now. And you're giving us all this. And you're pushing us down. And I just say aye every week. You don't have to.
You're really saying this too.
Oh, you know what? And this is important. And this is important. We follow our leaders. We follow our leaders. You know what? We respond to everything. For us in here, and I've got lack of respect every single time I came here. And I have due respect. And we just got shut down. I don't even talk to you because they're just, not even talk to you.
She was a plant. That woman right there, and that's retired detective right there. She was a plant.
This one here?
Yeah, the one in the white. She was the plant.
In the white. Okay.
Yeah. And then she says to me, she has the nerve to say to me, well, I don't share your opinions. And I go, well, there's a mic. Go, go up to the mic. I go, I speak for myself, you know? And, um, I just walked away from her because I knew, um, the way she was talking, that, you know, she was a nobody. And, you know, she was there for a purpose.
Crazy. I got one of those in the comments right now. One of those guy, I actually appreciate it though. Like, like, he, he's listening. He's following me. He's promoting us. It's unbelievable. You get these people that follow you around, Rita. Sometimes it's good. You gotta, you gotta monetize them like we do.
I don't know. I get all these friend requests coming in. I don't even know who these people are.
Yeah. You'll, you'll get some trolls. I eventually, you'll end up with some trolls. They're, they're so, they're such losers.
Yeah. No, I know. Oh, can I say share something else? So we did, uh, we did a peaceful protest and we were on Washington Street. But it's probably about six of us. It was posted last week. And there was another protest too. And we're doing the protest and a car, you know, we're on Washington Street, right in front of the Junior High, but probably at least 600 feet from the building. And, you know, most people went by and, and were, some people didn't know, some people beeped, a lot of people beeped. Some people gave us the finger. I actually think Matt McCabe went by once. I don't even know him. But there was a big heavyset guy who gave us his big fat middle finger. And, you know, they wanted to get us upset. And instead of getting upset, I just waved and said, thank you. And then another woman, uh, came up with her daughter. Her daughter was about, uh, probably 15. And she starts yelling and screaming at us that, uh, the children, and she was talking about Gigi, which I don't know who Gigi was. Maybe she's Denise. And, um, she wanted us to stop protesting. And, you know, we would silence peacefully. And all we were doing was holding signs. And, um, so I said, how are we offending you? You know, I'm trying to have dialogue with this person. I'm trying to understand why she's like screaming like a maniac. Cause we weren't doing anything. And by the way, they have cow washes there, which they do it all the time. So we weren't doing anything that wasn't done at a cow wash. And so she's screaming. And then she, uh, I said, so how are we offending you? You know? And she looked at me and she goes, you're an effing moron. And I said, that's it. I said, you don't know how to have a respectful conversation. I'm being respectful. You don't know how to have respect. So I'm done with you, I said. And by the way, you must be one of the losers. And I walked away. And, and after I said that, I walked away, her tone came down and somebody continued to talk to her, but hopefully I got her attention because that's where she behaved in front of her child. And the people in that group, the McCaves, the Alberts, the O'Keefes, I don't know any of these people. But what I do know is what the public faces of these people, the people that are speaking out, it's pretty trashy. It's pretty trashy. So it's not hard to determine who's part of the group because they all have the same language.
Yeah, they are, they sure do. You can tell. It's funny, like trolls, you can always, I, I found a troll today, a new troll. Because they all have fake names now.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
And I was like, it's either this person or they're, they're friends with this person. And it turned out they were friends with the person. I was right. It was right. I knew, like, could spot them a mile away. You're just, even when you don't know them. Like, and I, I'd never talked to this person in my life. So they come out of the woodwork. When you do good, good stuff, you, you end up with a few haters, but mostly people love you, Rita.
Yeah. Thank you. I appreciate it. I'm just doing the right thing. I just, I feel like I'm just a, you know, just a, a regular person standing up for what's right. And, um, I'm so proud of everybody who's joined this movement. And gotta give kudos to Aiden. Uh, kudos to Aiden. Uh, he owns the story. He owns the story.
He does.
He really did, um, a phenomenal job. Uh, you know, he's got people that, you know, he's got his own set of haters and, you know, I, I didn't know Aiden. I didn't even know Turtle Boy. You know, before May and, um, he's done a really good job and he has grown as his story, as the story has grown. And, and he puts out facts like I've never seen them before. And it's just riveting. So, uh, good people, uh, doing the right thing for our country. And, uh, I'm so proud of everybody that's part of this movement. I'm just so proud. And I'm proud to be part of it.
Me too. I, I love the, the select, seeing you all speaking at the select board and knowing that they're shitting, they're shitting their pants. Like, we know that. Like, so, and people are proud of you. And I'm glad that we can have you on the show tonight. And do you feel, I mean, you obviously feel, feel it on the Facebook. Are you feeling it on the show tonight? You see the comments?
Oh, yeah. I'm, I'm not looking at the comments because, you know, I just, I mean, I'm glancing at them, but I'm, I'm, you know.
Here's a new one.
I don't want to distract myself.
I'll read this one from Sandy Hart. She says, we are proud of you. First time watcher, great show. Uh, we are proud of you, Rita.
Oh.
From Sandy Hart on Facebook.
That's really nice. Thank you, Sandy.
Yeah. Here's another one. You are all, you're, you're all doing the best to remove the dark cloud over Canton. Sometimes I have a hard time reading these comments because I click a one and then like five more come in. It's crazy. You can't keep up with them. And it's like.
It's really got people passionate about the whole thing, doing the right thing.
It's awesome.
Peacefully and using their voices. And what a great way to do it.
It sure is. So I, I want to finish this video. We're almost done.
Okay.
And we'll check out, uh, yeah, let's, let's finish this video. Cause this is where these guys are just, they don't know what the, what they just did. There it goes. That was the end. So everyone got to see the whole video. I just want to make sure they got to watch the video.
There was nothing there. The public comments, they got shut down. I mean, I think, I don't even think we were nine minutes into it.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, they didn't give the full 15 minutes. Definitely not. They shut people down from speaking. They were rude. They cut people off. They don't have a frigging, like a buzzer or any warning that you're even over your time until the guy rudely interrupts you. I mean, it's just everything about that.
Right.
It's not good. And you're in a crisis. You shouldn't even have three minutes. You should, you should acknowledge that.
Exactly.
This is a time when Canton citizens need to communicate and speak, and you should welcome it. This is what, I mean, the only time that you want to manage time is just because you don't have enough time. You know, the meeting could go too long. That meeting wasn't gonna go too long.
It was half an hour ahead of schedule.
Yeah.
It was a half an hour scheduled.
Why, why don't they want to work in a huge crisis? Like.
I think the police department owns them. That's what I think. I think they're owned by the police department. And that's a real sad thing. Um, you know, and I, I hope that changes. I hope that changes. And I, I don't think the chief Rafferty, um, I met her at the very first meeting that I went to. Um, and I spoke with her and, uh, I think she's doing a disservice to this town by not getting out in front of these citizens. And we're not asking, we don't, you know, we'll take a group of 50 people. So Chief Rafferty, if you're wa, watching, we are asking one more time for you to get with us, concerned citizens and talk to us. Please, you've got the money in the town. The select board will, will, will fund it. Bring a crisis management team in here because you love this town as much as we do. And help us to bring it back together. We don't want to be fighting with the select board. We want to work with the select board. But when you clamp down people and you don't let them speak, it's a pressure cooker and it is going to explode. And that's what you're saying. And I ask you, uh, please, Chief Rafferty and, um, Mr. Theodore to please bring us together. You are our leaders. Please bring us together.
You think Chief Rafferty will do that? You think, or she's gonna hide?
She has yet to do it. But I never give up hope.
We, good comment, uh, from Liz Nelson. She said, my select board, there was no time limit, time limit when things are wrong.
Right. And they never should be.
Yeah. And especially like, you know, I could see if this was like a zoning agreement or a political, this is about everything about the town. Like, this is the most important issue that you have.
Right.
It's like, this is a crisis. This isn't, um, about a zoning or a, an apartment building going in. And we've heard from 50 people already. There should be no limits on this stuff.
There should be no limits. You have people in crisis and when you don't address the issues, they get worse. I mean, that's just common knowledge. And that's what they're doing week after week. And what they're doing is not working. And I hope that they do the right thing. And, uh, I want to work with them. Because working against them isn't going to solve anything. I want to work with them. And I know everybody else wants to work with them. But when people refuse to work with you and they refuse to listen, uh, then you get what we got.
Yeah. It's gotten really silly.
You know, it's sad. It's sad.
So we, we don't think Chief Rafferty is gonna do the right thing. She hasn't yet. We don't think the select board is gonna do the right thing. It sounds like they're gonna ban public comment at the next hearing, which is just.
That's what I heard. They're gonna ban it.
So what do you, what do you, what do you think's gonna happen? Like, what do you think the citizens are gonna do at the next hearing?
Well, you know, I have to watch back what they said about the, uh, Little League team. So, you know, they're bringing the Little League team in. And of course, that's a smokescreen because I don't know, a Little League team deserves recognition, no question about it. But at the select, at the town hall, you know, in this tiny cramped room. But if that's, if they have chosen to have the next select board meeting with the Little Leaguers and their family and friends, um, then, um, that's their time to shine. And I think I won't be there. And so, uh, I don't want to take anything away because, um, Kerry Roberts, uh, who is involved in this case, um, and, and John's nephew is one of the Little Leaguers. And, uh, she took her opportunity to get a photo op, I guess, when he, they were going for the series, you know, to win, whatever. And, um, I don't want to take anything away from the kids. So if the next meeting is gonna be for, you know, they're gonna have the kids there, um, I don't, I don't want to take that away from them. So I'll probably skip the next meeting. But that doesn't, I'll just use that time to start the recall on John and, uh, Chris Albert. Because we can't recall Chris Albert until October 4th. But that doesn't mean we can't get the paperwork going sooner. So I'll just use those energies. So thank you very much, John Connolly. Um, it, the Little Leaguers are gonna be at the next meeting. I won't be there. Uh, but I'll use those energies, uh, productively to move the cause forward.
It's awesome. I'm, uh, I'm looking forward to see what y'all do. And I wish you the best of luck.
Oh, thank you so much. And I really appreciate this opportunity, um, you know, to chat with you. Um, I really appreciate it. And, and I didn't realize I was gonna end up with the opportunity to speak directly to people that I want to speak to. Like, you know, the boards, but you know what? Hey, you gotta seize your opportunities when they're there. So thank you so much, Mike. I really appreciate it. And I'm sure I'll be talking to you soon.
Yes. Anything else that comes up too? Like, just let us know. Like, we want to cover all, all of this. Um, I got a cou, a couple more questions for you. Are you gonna go on Friday? Cause a lot of people.
Oh, I'm there. You kidding me? I'm there. I'm there. Oh, yes.
At the courthouse on Friday morning?
Oh, yes. I think, uh, Aiden's gonna get there at 7:30 and some people might get there at seven. Um, I'm gonna be there. Uh, I'm gonna be there, uh, by 7:30. And, um, I am going to be there, uh, cheering on Karen and cheering for truth and justice and democracy. And, um, I'm really excited about it. And, uh, just like I was excited about doing the protests on the street, you know, it's fun. It's fun. Not that it's fun to do, but it's exciting when you're doing good for the world.
It really is. I mean, that's it. Like, that's what keeps me going. Like, I, I always like, so many times I've wanted to quit this show and stuff. And then I'm like, what would I do?
Yeah.
This is the only way I, I feel like I help people, like beyond doing dog, you know, my business, but like, you know, it's a different type of thing.
Yeah. No, you do. I, I didn't even know about you. This is all new to me. You know, this podcast.
Absolutely. I, I.
It's all good to me.
Yeah, yeah. I love, I love that you have been standing up. I can't wait to see what happens next. And I wish you all the best of luck in Canton. I want to thank you so much for calling in tonight, Rita. Is there anything last words you want to leave for your fellow citizens or anybody else that's listening?
Um, keep on using your voices, everybody. Keep on getting the facts and spreading the facts. And stand for truth and justice because if we don't, it's not going to be a pleasant place to live anymore. So we really have to, uh, stand for truth and justice and do it the right way. Um, and lastly, I just have to say happy birthday to my fiance. Cause happy birthday, Philly. You know, he's not watching.
Oh, he's a good guy. He's glad you do this.
Like, I love you. I love you all. And your support, um, helps us, helps us to do, um, which, what is a monumental task, but it has to be done. So I thank you all. And keep on keeping on. And we will reap the benefits of our efforts. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you so much, Rita.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
Okay. Bye-bye.
I know. So yeah, we're the Young Jerks. My name's Mike Crawford. Uh, we're gonna probably try to set up some phone calls now too. Let's try to take some calls tonight. My dog's starting to act up, but I think he's gonna be able to take a couple more minutes. I want to take some calls. I want to know what people think about that hearing yesterday. I want to think, ask them, you know, about the updates that have been going on in this case. I want to know what you think about everything. What? You know, last time you guys brought so much to the table and the phone calls. So I want to do that again. I want to hear from you folks. And you let me know what you want to talk about. Cause a lot of times you have angles and information that we're not even thinking about. Or we know about, but we haven't talked about in a while. There's so much to this. So this is gonna be your opportunity. Think we have the phone number up. Do we have the phone number up yet? 978-560-3155 is the phone number. And I'm just setting up the system to make sure it's actually gonna work. Let's make sure. Looks like it's good to go. So you can call in if you, if you want to make a comment tonight. I'm also gonna do an update on what we've raised so far tonight. And a couple of people con, uh, contributing. Every, uh, dollar that we raised tonight through the Cash App, 50% of it is gonna go to the Free Karen Reed Defense Fund. And we did have some more contributions. We had, uh, $40 and $20 come in earlier from Christine and Melissa. And then we had a hundred dollars. Wow. Alicia, Alicia Smith sent us a hundred dollars. Wow, that's amazing. Thank you, Alicia. You're amazing. And then Maureen Coakley sent us $20. So that puts us at, what are we at right now? Hold on. I gotta get my pen out. Yeah, there's my pen. Oh, here it is. So we're at a hundred forty, a hundred eighty dollars right now. So we've raised $90 already for Karen Reed Fund. And again, I said, we're gonna keep that open until 9:00 AM tomorrow morning. So if anyone listens overnight to the show, which often happens, people listen in the morning or they listen late at night. If you wanna join us in our fundraiser, we'd love that. Mike Crawford, one on the Cash App. Please send money that way. And, uh, half the money will go to the Free Karen Reed Fund. Half the money goes to the Young Jerks. Got some more comments coming in. And we are hoping to speak to Nick Rocco. I have, I don't know if Nick has tried to call in. But again, if anyone wants to call in, this is a good opportunity for you to call in. Maybe people are all tired about talking to us. We took a lot of calls the other night. Get that number up again. There we go. We got a call. I knew we'd get one. Hopefully it's a good one. Let's see who's on the phone. Hey, who's calling?
Hi.
Hi, who's this?
Maureen Coakley.
Lauren. Is that right? Lauren? Can you hear us?
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. What do you want to, what do you want to, uh, say for the audience tonight? What's your comment?
Okay.
Okay, the first thing is that watching you from Mexico, first of all, and I'm like geez, okay. Literally, the minute I heard that Ryan was in Mexico, I immediately went and withdrawn. But it was really interesting to hear you. But something happened and I was like...
Maureen, I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut you off for a second. Listen, Maureen, we, we can't, your sound is not good. I don't know if you're moving the phone around, or if it's because you're in Mexico. So I'm gonna, I want you to try again. Let's just try... Go ahead. Yeah, I think we're gonna take another call. I'm sorry, Maureen. Maybe another time. It looks like you just don't have a good connection right now. I wanted that call. Let's take some more calls. Maybe, maybe Maureen could even try calling back, because sometimes when you call back, it works. So let's try that again. We got a 978 number. I'm gonna put it up on the screen in a second. Let me put it up on the screen so people can see it right on the right on the banner. Hold on one second. There we go. 978-560-3155. Maureen, if you want to try to call again, we'll, we'll take your call, too. Sometimes the second time, it works better. I don't know what else I was saying tonight. I probably could play some more video, but I think I'm all videoed out. If, if we don't get the phone calls, I may just wrap this up tonight. Little Miss No Name said, sounded like she had something to say about Brian. Oh, that would be interesting. Oh, man. One of our trolls. Yeah, someone said bad connection. Yeah, she did. She did not have a good connection, unfortunately. Yeah, I guess Turtle Club has started tonight, too, so I think people probably want to go watch Turtle Club now. Yeah, if we, if anyone else wants to call in, this is your opportunity before we do wrap it up. 978-560-3155 is the phone number. I did want to take a look at a couple other things, too, here. Here we go.
This meeting, or you will be sorry.
Motion's been made. Any seconded? Not seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
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 You're afraid of the taxpayers. You're afraid of the taxpayers.
The brave ones didn't say aye. And thank you. This is a great, this is a great meeting, and you guys are making it worse. You're making it worse. And we're not gonna stop. No, thank you.
Hey, you're live on the show. Who's calling? Hello? That's weird. It connected, but something's wrong with their, either their phone or my phone. That was, that was a weird... Let's, let's continue with the video. Few other videos, too, I want to play tonight.
This meeting, or you will be sorry.
Seconded? Seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
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 You're afraid of the taxpayers.
Snowballing. You're paying for your health insurance, right? Snowballing.
This is what we're talking about.
You're paying for your health insurance, right?
How you live on the show?
Hi, Hola, from Mexico. This is Maureen.
It sounds, it sounds better this time. Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, whatever. Oh, my God, my dog's freaking out. Sorry.
Go, no, go. Hello? I, I accidentally hung up on the other call and took this other call. I didn't mean to do that. I'm sorry to the caller who's been trying to call in. Who, who's on the phone now?
This is Nick. What's going on?
Nick, how you doing?
Nick, can you hear me?
I can hear you really well. Can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you. Do you want to take the other call first?
Um, I don't know if I get back to her. We've had a issue with, actually, am I back with her now? Are you on the phone, too? Who's on the phone? I think I lost them both. My, my phone is jumping around. Let's see who we have. Who, who, is this Nick again?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I can't get her back. I don't know what I did. I hit, sometimes I hit buttons. I, I just don't want people to get upset at me. We're getting a lot of calls right now, too, so... Nick?
All right, let's take them. I'll call, take them. I'll call back in a little bit.
No, no. Let's take your call. Let's, let's talk.
Um, so finally, this billboard goes up, huh?
Yeah, the billboard looks great.
Um, so, so now I found out what's, what's really happening with the Route 3 billboard. So this is, this is basically all I wanted to say was, so the company that we're using owns the billboard, and Outlook rents the billboard from them. So Outlook is giving a little backlash, basically saying, hey, you know, we don't want this message up there. And the company that owns it's like, well, it doesn't matter what you want, we own the board, and they, they paid for it, and this is what we're gonna do. So basically, he has his attorney involved with this. Um, I got an email today that says they're making real good progress with it. I don't, I don't have a specific day when it's gonna go up, but, but it, it looks, it looks like it is gonna happen for sure. So just patience on this one, definitely.
Awesome. And this one, the one that we're looking at now on the screen, is that gonna be up there for a while?
Yeah, that one should be up, that one should be up through December.
Oh, awesome.
Hopefully, we don't need it up that long. You know, hopefully, hopefully, this, this case gets resolved before then, but yeah, that one's gonna be up there until December, so basically, almost all...
Awesome. And you, you're, you're ready for the big party on Friday night?
Yeah, so I mean, if you guys haven't seen the post yet, there's a post in the Facebook group, basically answering some questions. Bring your own lawn chairs, bring some bug spray. And we're gonna try to keep a lot of the cash, like I said last time, I think, very minimal. Uh, we will be accepting some Venmo payments for certain things, but majority of it is gonna try to be to donating to the Defense Fund, just like I said last time, just so we don't have, you know, hundreds of dollars being dispersed, dispersed different ways, try to keep track of the money the easiest way possible. And I believe the, Aiden is gonna be live streaming that show. I, I believe on his list of things, he has it listed at 6:30. Um, but that show, the Q and A, I believe is gonna stop closer to 7:30. Are you going, Mike?
I don't think so. I, I don't have tickets, so I wasn't, you know...
All right, if, uh,
I don't, I don't...
If something, if something happens and, and...
Yeah, I mean, I, I think I, I would probably rather have someone else go, too, like, because I don't want to be taking a spot from somebody, you know what I mean? It's like, I know people really want to go to that event.
Yeah, you know what's crazy? Actually, I heard, I had a few people sending messages, and to me, this is a little, you know, hey, do what you want, but I, I don't, I don't see why some people are doing this, but some people are scalping these tickets. Okay, someone sent me, someone sent me a message.
I believe it.
Um, they, they said, I got, I got two tickets to steal, and they said, okay, how much? The guy, the, the guy goes, how much do you want to pay? She's like, well, how much were they? He goes, 25. So first off, they were more than 25 bucks. And the guy goes, well, I'll take 60, 60 bucks a ticket for them. I'm like, what? Like, what is going on right now?
Yeah.
People are trying to profit off of this almost, and it, it, wow, I'm like, wow, unbelievable. But we've had, I mean, we've had, we've had a couple people pay almost $200 a ticket to get in.
I believe it. I believe it. It's, uh, it's, I mean, people really want to go to this event. It got sold out very quickly.
Yeah, and I just, I just found out today. You know, I, I, I was assuming we had about seven baskets, raffles. Um, I, I want to say I have like close to 13 raffles for this event now. Um, I actually am gonna have a signed, brilliant sweatshirt, signed by the whole team, the 2017, 2018, gonna be signed by the whole team, the COA is included in it. Uh, there's gonna be some good stuff going on on Friday.
Awesome. And, and with the event and the billboards, I want to ask you, has there been media attention on this? I imagine, especially with the billboard, but even the party, too. Like, is there, have you heard of any media attention on this right now?
So it's part of the Star Drive event. We're gonna keep that pretty private. Um, I know there is one media outlet coming from Canton, um, but that was per requested. Other than that, um, there, I don't think there will be other media coverage on that. Um, I was told this morning that Ted Daniel showed up to the, um, showed up to the billboard as, oh, Ted Daniel, I call him Ted Daniel. Ted Daniel pulled up to the, uh, the billboard as it was getting installed. And the guy Ben noticed him and was like, you know, can I help you? He's like, oh, you know, I'm, I'm here to talk, you know, I'm from Fox 25, here to talk about the billboard. Um, so he did a quick interview with him. He did reach out to me through Facebook, asked if I, you know, if I can make any comments, so I, I gave him a few comments. I asked him today if it was gonna air, but he said with all the hurricane stuff going on, um, if it's gonna be on, it's gonna be on very quickly, tonight at 10 o'clock. I'm not sure, you know, the beginning of the end, but he said if it's on, it's gonna be like a quick little segment, basically, like Karen Reed supporters put up a, a billboard, here it is, onto the next thing, is what he kind of said. Um, so it might be on tonight at 10. I'll be watching it just to see, but, um, I think, you know, it's only been up for a day. Um, and I noticed that, again, I don't know if this is specifically from the billboard, but, but her, the the Defense Fund was super slow today, so I don't know if it was from a lot of traffic. People were checking out the website, or if it was just on their end that their website was down. Um, but, you know...
That's the thing. I hit it earlier. I, I, yeah, Nick, I couldn't get on there. I was hitting it earlier. I was like, I can't. It was down.
Because I'm, I'm, I constantly check us for donations, because there are some people in the group who, who don't see the raffles, right? So if I see a name in there, I, I check to see if they're in the group. I, I shoot them a message. I say, hey, listen, I, I saw your donation. And I ask, do you want to be in the giveaway? If not, you know, thank you for your donation. I, I like to give everybody a chance, because sometimes it just, it gets past people. So I say, you want to get in? No? Okay, thanks for the donation. If you want to get in, you get five entries, whatever it is, you know, so um, I'm constantly on it. When I couldn't get it on today, I was like, it's either because of the, you know, people are checking it out from the billboard, or it's just slow today. I don't know, but, um, you know, it's only been day one, not even, not even 24 hours yet, so I'm, I'm curious to see what type of attention this brings, especially on Sunday, where the football league is gonna be tons of, you know, tons of media outlets.
Miami, right?
Things like that, so I'm...
They play Miami this weekend?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's, I think it's a night, I think it's a night.
Yeah, 8:00 PM, 8:20, yeah. That's gonna be a Zoom.
Um, yeah, we got, we got Patriots tickets in the raffle, too, um, like, almost front row seats, uh, to a Pats game. I, I think it's in October versus the Buffalo Bills, actually. Front row seats, 50 yard line, those tickets are gonna be in the raffle.
Is that at the event, the raffle, or is this for something online right now?
Yeah, so so that's gonna be at the event. Uh, I, I did have a few people ask if these raffles at the event will be available online. Unfortunately, they won't be, because, um, there's just too many, and you have to buy raffle tickets to enter this. Um, but the, the, this week, we're doing the, another 60/20/20, and, and the jersey is still up for raffle for the people who are online. Um, but the raffles will be for just specific, for people at the event.
Awesome. Love it. Love everything you're doing, Nick. Keep doing it. Um, anything you want to, last things you want to share tonight with the audience?
Well, just, uh, bear with me, be patient on the Route 3 billboard. It will come. Uh, we will get it done. It's just gonna take a little bit of extra, you know, a couple speed bumps in the road, but we will get it done. Um, just, just be patient. That's all I ask.
Awesome. Thank you and your wife and your whole team and everyone who's supporting this, because it's amazing what you're doing to see this billboard go up.
Well, I, and, and I appreciate you doing the, uh, you know, guys, make sure you donate to Mike tonight. You've given 50% of the donations to Karen, so um, you know, and I, and I heard you earlier saying, you know, piggybacking from Turtle, but you know what? It's not. It's, it's a great thing you're doing, all of us are doing, everyone's supporting her, and I, I'm sure she, I'm sure she sees this all, and probably, you know, I mean, if I, again, if I was in her situation, I would be in awe with the amount of support. Um, and I think she feels it. I think she sees it, and I think she knows, so keep it up, everybody, and, uh, we, we, I think, I think, I mean, who knows what's gonna happen Friday? Personally, myself, I don't think this case is gonna get dismissed, but again, we'll see what happens. Um, but with that being said, have a, have a good rest of the show. I'll be watching it, and thanks for taking my call.
Thank you so much, Nick.
All right, see you, Mike.
That's Nick Rocco. He's been raising all the money. He's amazing. Yeah, Turtle Boy's got his Turtle Club going on right now. It's like a private show that you pay for if you want to listen to you, you, uh, become a subscriber. I want to call back this caller I hung up on earlier, because I feel bad. Oh, more money's coming in. I want to thank, uh, it looks like we had two more contributions. Elizabeth Smith just sent in $10. And Mike Walsh sent in 30. That's amazing. So now we're at, uh, what are we at? 190 plus 30? 220 now. We're up to 220. Let's take this call. We'll get another call, too.
Hello?
Hi, who's calling?
My wife's a date?
Yeah, you are.
All right. Yeah, that guy just called in. He said, uh, there's a couple of speed bumps for that, for that billboard. I hope they ain't the speed bumps, John O'Keefe ran over. Had to draw Brian's house. I wanted to talk about something.
Go ahead.
What's that?
Go ahead. Tell, quickly.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, oh, no, it's not gonna be real quick. But we were talking.
You're already frustrating me, man, so you get to your point.
In about, Mike, I, I want to talk about the taillight, but it's not gonna be a quick, I'm talking about the pieces, how there's so many pieces of it that no one really talks about it, about how when he finds, when he finds taillight weeks later, or whatever, if he, if he messed up making it more taillight than his, that can actually fit inside the taillight.
Yeah, that does seem weird. That does seem weird.
No, you could solve the case in five minutes if you, if I had a glue gun and you put me in the room with the taillight to see if they accidentally him finding that extra, if Michael Proctor had it exactly perfect, he had time with the car, he gets it exactly right, plants it perfectly, and then Kurt Berkowitz or whatever finds it and just totally fucks everything up by adding more than that can fit in the hole.
Yeah, that is weird.
I haven't heard anyone talk about that. I just thought it seems like the case could be over in five minutes if they could just get in a room with it, but that's all I had to say.
Well, that was, see, that was quick. That was quick, man. You started off shitty. You had it, you had it good. You, you, that was a good call. I liked the call. What's your name again?
Vamos, the one and only.
Vamos, that was a good call. See, when you, I thought, for a second, I thought you were like someone else who was trying to hijack, there's some hijackers out there. What I mean by that is they're trying to create their own story, and so I thought you were one of them. You, you, that was a good call.
All right. The speed bump joke. You remember that on Court TV when they said you went up and down the stairs from speed bumps in the road that don't exist?
Oh, see, I didn't catch that. I thought you, and I also thought you were maybe throwing a dig at O'Keefe. I didn't get what you were saying. Now I get that. Okay. Now, now I'm laughing at your joke. Now, yeah, usually, you're not supposed to explain jokes, but you even got away with that. You got, you got me to laugh. That was good.
Well, maybe you did. I didn't, wasn't sure if you even really, like, seen it, you know what I mean? Not everyone saw that Court TV.
No, I, I didn't, but I heard about it. I, I actually don't even think I saw it, but I heard about it, like, the, uh, it's funny.
Yeah, it would have been for the, the five people that probably actually watched it.
A lot of people watched that. I, I, I know exactly what you're talking about, because I remember people would comment about the speed bumps over and over again. So I want to thank you, Vam, I'm gonna screw up your name. Vamos? Vam? Vamo?
Vamo.
Vamo?
B E Moose. They Moose, B E Moose, I'm in, I'm in the comments, I'm in the group.
All right, well, thank you so much for calling in. Are you, are you going on Friday by, by chance?
I, I'm way up in May and I'm so far away.
Oh, you got, you got the best cannabis up there, are you a cannabis user like I am?
No, no, cause I get way too high.
Oh, there you go, a lot of people.
I used to be able to.
Yeah.
But now, nowadays it's too strong, I, I, I don't like, I'll, I'll end up in the corner, uh, in the fetal position, drinking the pee like.
Don't do that, don't, I don't want you drinking any pee, don't, don't do that, that's not good. Awesome.
Are you going?
No, I wish I could, I'm working, I'm like working all weekend, um, I'm crazy, man, I, I never take a day off, I love my job and, um, it's one of the, I, I'm in the dog care business, and you know what that is, twenty-four, seven days a week, I mean, so.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So, every once in a while, I take a day off, but, yeah, thank you so much for calling in.
I'm tuning into the live stream.
Awesome, thank you, Vamos. That was a good call, actually. He started off rocky, I, I, I'm edgy tonight too, cause I'm kinda tired and I wanna take some more calls, and I'm trying to, I wanna call that woman back from Mexico, cause, I mean, she tried like three, four times, she kept calling us back, I hung up on her by accident. Sometimes I'm not good with it, like, you guys have to be realized too on this show. I had hard enough time like hosting a show, now I'm hosting and producing a show, which it's difficult, cause I, it's hard for me to focus on, like, I like to focus on one thing. So, me and pushing buttons, I hit buttons, sometimes I hit but, buttons on videos when I don't mean to, and it goes all over people. It's usually accidental, I'm not doing this stuff to be rude, I'm not hanging up on people. I just want you to know, I'm clumsy, all right? And I'm hosting a show, so it's, it's very difficult for me to do everything at once. And when I first started doing these shows, I had producers, I had people who, I had a studio. Since COVID, it's a little different, you can do it at home, I actually like to do it at home better, so that's the way we roll now. Let's try to call this person back, I hope it's the right number, yeah, it has to be, this is her. I'll try her one more time.
Hello?
Hi. You're live on the show, I hung up on you earlier, I, I didn't even get your name, you sound perfect now, what's your name? Tell us who, who you are.
Oh, my name is Maureen Coakley.
Maureen, oh, you gave us money tonight, thank you so much, Maureen.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, okay, what I wanted to say was that I grew up in Worcester, Massachusetts. My father was a cop for thirty-two years, my uncle was the chief. Um, I probably have, who even, I can't even count, seven, eight, maybe on the, an L E O. My point is, is that the, the minute, the second I read that Brian Albert did not come out of his house on that morning, told me all I needed to know. When my father was a cop, there was no such thing as ring cameras, my father was the ring camera. If anything happened in my entire neighborhood, police presence, my father would be out there trying to assist the victims, the complainants, the, the cops themselves, because he knew both sides. The fact that he didn't come out of the house told me everything I needed to know about this case. It just doesn't happen. I lived it my whole life. All my father's friends were cops, they all came over, over our house. Did they drink? Sure, they had a good time. But if something happened out in the street, they were out there. There's no way that he wouldn't come out of his house, no way, unless he had something to hide. And that told me all I needed to know, never mind all the other evidence. From personal experience, you're a cop, something happens on your on my front lawn, another cop dead? Are you kidding me? He didn't come out of the house. Why?
Yeah.
No cop, no cop could ever explain why they wouldn't come out of their house, to assist the fellow officers, to assist the man, your brother in blue, who's laying on your front lawn. Are you kidding me? I've seen my father save people from choking in a restaurant. I've seen him drag people out of crashed cars in our neighborhood that he had nothing to do with.
Yeah. I'm not even a cop and I do that. Like, at my place, there's always a couple, there's a couple of us, you know, we live in, you know, condos, townhouses, and anytime there's something going on, there's a few of us that always go out, you know, and find out what's going on, talk to the cops and.
Of course, of course. He didn't do that.
Right.
From my personal experience, I'm sixty years old, I've been law enforcement in my family since they was born. Powerful, strong, big influences in the police department. When I'm in Worcester, like, everyone knows my name, our name, because so many of my family members are, are L E Os, and I, and I love that. I love cops. I've always backed the blue. But when he didn't come out of that house, come on.
Right.
Come on.
Yeah. I agree. I, I'm glad you brought that up, Maureen, cause this, this is one of the things that I always go back to, like, I think it makes, it's so obvious when Brian Albert didn't come out of the house, and Kelleher too, like, you know, I, people know.
Exactly.
I know, like Kelleher, I went to college with him, but he didn't come out of the house either, it's weird, it's very weird.
I'm telling, I'm telling you, blue lights in my neighborhood, my father was out there, I don't care what time it's night, morning, middle of the night, they hear that, they're used to hearing that. They're used to the calls, right?
Yep.
There is no way, no way, he wouldn't have come out of the house if he didn't have something to hide.
Exactly.
Just no way.
Exactly.
If he was as smart as he seems, he would have come out and said, oh my God, what's going on, blah, blah, blah.
And let's talk about those.
By not coming out.
I, I, we got a comment up here from Joe, he said there was no search, which is another, I mean, they didn't even go in the house, if that happened at my place, if I had a party and one of my guests ended up dead, that was invited to the party on the front lawn, and I didn't come out, the cops, the cops would have been knocking at my door saying, we're coming in, we're gonna search your house, we're gonna, we wanna know what the hell's going on. Dogs would be going nuts, none of that happened.
You got a dead cop on your front lawn, you're a cop, you both work for the same department.
Yep, never happened.
It's ludicrous, 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 I can't even like say that enough. Is the minute I read the couple first lines of Turtle Boy's first blog, and it said he didn't come out of the house, nor his wife, come on.
Exactly.
We have seven kids, all, and my mother, father, with all nine of us would have been out there on the front lawn.
Thank you so much, Maureen, for calling in tonight. Are you, are you going, let me ask you one more question before we, uh, take some more calls. Um, are you going on Friday to the, to the
Oh.
Court hearing?
I wish I could, I was there last time. I was there at the last court, um, I'm in Mexico, and I live here.
Oh, yeah, you're in Mexico, that's right. You're the first time I've ever had a call from Mexico, which is awesome. Of course you'd have to do that.
I lived here for ten, ten months out of the year, I lived here, I was only home for July and August. And my boss so graciously paid me for the day off to go to Karen Reed's court hearing. Right? I mean, it's just ludicrous that people don't see this side, I understand trying to see both sides, but when one side has a list of evidence, C V S, you know, receipt long, and the other side's not showing shit that they've asked for, you know, it, it, it's just ridiculous, I hate, my father used to say, nobody hates a bad cop worse than a, a good cop.
Yeah, there you go, thank you so, thank you so much for calling in tonight, Maureen.
No, thank you.
Then thank you for donating to our fundraiser, thank you so much.
Oh, you're welcome. Danata.
Well.
That means you're welcome.
Yes, thank you. We got another call here, who's on the line right now? Who's on the line?
Hi, Michael, this is Nicholas Fiorello calling in.
Hey, Nicholas.
I wanna commend you uh, for, uh, you know, getting the truth out there, uh, letting the public know what's been going on. And, uh, I can't commend you guys enough, and everyone that is in search of the truth of, uh, what's really going on in Canton, Massachusetts. And, uh, I'd like to share a little bit about, um, my story and, uh, the identical situation of, uh, what is happening to Karen Reed and the unlawful framing of her, and the unfortunate demise of Officer John O'Keefe, um, where no one's really looking at the bigger picture of, um, who Brian Albert, Albert is, what he has done, and what role he plays in the larger grand corruption, corruption scheme that's actually infecting the state of Massachusetts for probably over fifty years. Michael Albert, uh, is quite an individual, very sophisticated, tactical liaison between the Boston Police Department, the secret courts of Boston.
Oh, you're the secret court guy, now I figure it out, you're the secret court guy.
Yes, I am, sir.
I looked at your stuff, and I, I don't know, man, you think Whitey Bulger's still alive, right?
Well, um, I could tell you that the direct reason why the former director of the Boston Office of the FBI resigned uh, is when we proffered that information to him, uh, in early May. Um, that afternoon, he announced his retirement, and then ended up in Canton, Massachusetts with his good friend, uh, close associate, uh, Brian Albert, at the retirement of the Canton, uh, police chief.
Why, why, why do you think Whitey Bulger's alive though? Like, I don't get that, like, why do you think?
Well, well, uh, Michael, I, I didn't want it, and, uh, you know, we're, we're all on the same team here, I didn't wanna take away from what's happening.
It seems like you are, I mean, you tried to do this with Turtle Boy, you offered up a bunch of money, and now you're calling my show, you're, I, I, you know what? Why don't we talk offline? Cause, cause I'm not gonna be nice to you tonight, cause I think you're kind of, I think you're hijacking, I think Turtle Boy's right on that.
Nope, that's what, I don't wanna do that.
So let's talk offline, so I'll, I'll be a lot nicer to you. You sound like you're, you're pretty well spoken, Nicholas, but I, I don't, I, I gotta, I gotta.
Well, there's only two ways out, yeah, there's only two ways out of the story, is I've, I've made this all up and it couldn't simply be true.
Well, you could be nuts too, you could be crazy.
Yeah, or.
You, and you could be, have an ego, you could have an ego, like, there's a lot of, there's a lot of options, Nick, I don't know you. So, I'm gonna let you go, we'll talk offline. How's that sound?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, bye. All right, we're the Young Jerks, see, I knew, I knew it, I knew I was gonna get one of those calls tonight. He might be all right, but I looked at some of his stuff and I was just like, yeah, I don't know, man, oh, man. There was another call I wanna call back, maybe, let's see if we, uh, you know what, I, I think I did miss some calls, but I, I don't know who I missed now, so I'm just gonna let them go. I think we're good tonight, I think we got plenty of calls in. Turtle Club's on, I know a lot of people wanna go to watch Turtle Club, so I'm probably gonna wrap it up. Uh, we're the Young Jerks, I wanna thank everyone for listening, let's look at, see if there's any more money that came in tonight. The Free Karen Reed Fund. I wanna thank everyone though who's been supporting us, and even our trolls in the, uh, comment section, who are talking about my family life and their fantasies about how we live and how I do this, and I do that, when it's not reality at all. How can one be a mooch when they work every day for like ten years, like? How could you be a mooch when you're Irish Catholic and you don't like to take from people? You gotta come up with some better conspiracy theories, trolls. Like, if you're gonna actually like throw dirt at somebody, it actually has to sound something similar to their character, like the hardest working person that you probably know, nobody's gonna believe they're a mooch. Just saying, Riccio. But we did have some more money come in, which is awesome. Let's see, who else? Do we have more money come in? Let's see, we, geez, uh, all right, so we did have forty, twenty, a hundred, twenty, ten, no, no, we're good, okay, so we're, right now, it looks like we're at two, let's just count it all up, make sure again. Yeah, we raised two twenty tonight. And I also wanna thank, uh, from the last show, Anthony gave us forty. He left a message, he says, thanks for crossing over the Karen Reed side. Uh, Elizabeth Smith also left five dollars last show, she said, thank you on Sunday. And Jimmy Young, uh, Jim Young sent twenty-five, he said, uh, found you through Turtle Boy, glad he brought us together. And Justin Grant sent, uh, Green sent fifty, this was last, the last show too, and said, I hope you have many more years. One month on me, they're talking about the cost, there is, like I said, a cost to do the show, we, uh, pay fifty dollars a month to StreamYard. Um, and we also pay around fifty bucks for liability insurance, so we, we cover about a hundred bucks a month, not a big deal, but I do appreciate folks like, uh, Jim, who sent us money to help, uh, cover it, and Justin, Justin who, uh, sent the fifty. And Ann also sent money on the last show too. So I wanna thank everyone who's sent donations and helping support us. And like I said, half the money is gonna go to Karen Reed, uh, Defense Fund. And, uh, we're gonna take those donations until eight A M tomorrow morning. So, if you're watching later on the replay, you could still donate, and we're gonna send half the money to the Karen Reed Defense Fund. I am just about out of steam, you can probably tell, I'm starting to get cranky. So I think this is probably it for the night, I wanna thank everyone for listening, I'm glad you're enjoying the show, uh, Julie said, nice show tonight. Joe Biffle said, great show. Olivia had a comment, their attack could be on Twitter, it's wild, Olivia Nile, she's great on Twitter. Yeah, there's a lot of crazy trolls now, huh? She writes, the trolls have been active today, yeah, I think they're getting nervous, I think their trolls are getting nervous, they're very nervous. Uh, Little Miss No Name says, taking calls, channels do really well in true crime. Yeah, we, we love to take calls, you know? I've always taken calls. Loving it, I love calls, we have no screener, so, you know, you never know what kinda call you're gonna get. But it's funny, you know what usually never happens on the show? The trolls, like, occasionally, recently, we've had some like new trolls that called in, like on Aiden, basically. And then, uh, there was some like, uh, cannabis, like executive type trolls calling in. But mostly like the real trolls that we all know, they don't call in, cause they're cowards, they know they'll get destroyed by me. Uh, this is a good comment, Barclay wrote, do you think Brian Albert had a police scanner in his house? I wonder, I bet he did, or a radio. Who knows? I mean, his brother worked for the force, do you think his brother might have said, hey, bro, what's going on in front of your house? I mean, his brother works for Canton Police. Another good comment said, very nervous, love that you're raising money for Karen's defense, amazing. And another comment says, they're scared. Yeah. Uh, another comment, Melissa said, I wanna know who that guy is, who the, the troll who called in, yeah. Uh, another comment said, most cops do have scanners in their house. I'd imagine most do. Someone said, I should take another call, I think I'm done with calls, I'm just too tired tonight. Do you guys think I was too rude to, uh, Nicholas Fiorello? I, I mean, some of you might have seen where he was kinda going, he's, I don't know. There's another comment, when the facts get the trolls inflamed, you know you're hovering over the target, yeah. Yeah, I do, it's amazing. Someone said, no, you weren't rude at all. And Little Miss No Name said, secret courts, I gotta say, is piqued my curiosity at this point. That's the thing, like, it seems so interesting. Like, Whitey Bulger could be alive, like, may- Like Whitey Bulger could be alive. Like maybe, who knows? I mean. Maybe he didn't make a deal with the feds. I mean, I don't believe that, but you know. That's the thing though, like, you know, it, it will pique anyone's curiosity, but. Like I said, he could be an ego. He could be a grifter. He could be a liar. He could be a, you know, we don't know. And I'm looking at his website. It just. I don't know. I need more proof than what I'm seeing on your website. So it said, I'm guessing he has zero proof. I guess we're going to have to look at the website a little more clearly. People should probably check out. He's got a website out there. He also thinks Tupac is alive. Does he really? Tupac is not alive. I wish he was. I think there's some nefarious stuff going on the Tupac stuff, actually. I may do a show on Tupac. I've done some shows on Kurt Cobain, the death. And that they get a lot of listeners on those too. May actually do something on Tupac. You know, one of the things I've started to do on this show, you know, I kind of got bored with the politics. It's funny, this little snitch you in the comments is like. You'll never get any press to take you seriously again. You'll never get any politicians on the show. And it's like. Don't you realize number one, that I don't care about the politicians? Like. They all want to come on the show. Like I don't even want to have them on the show. I'm bored by that shit now. I've interviewed Ayanna Pressley. I've interviewed them all. Some of them are great, but you don't really know, like so many times you, you think they're great. You have them on the show and then you find out all this shit later that they did. And it's like, I'm just tired of that. Just tired of being disappointed by politics. And I think the audience is too, like the audience, we have major politicians on, we get more. Views of doing what we're doing tonight when no politician, so. I don't really care about that. And the press, like half the time the press is either ignoring us or they're calling me up. To basically do their job for them. And what I mean by that, cannabis, so many times. They're calling me because they know I have all the information on the story they're investigating. And they're like, oh, can you send me this person's number and this person's number and can you give me a quote? Like they're asking me to do their job basically, and I help them because I want the stories to get out there. So. I'm not worried about the, the, uh, press ignoring me because I had Turtle Boy on. That's not going to happen. That's like ridiculous. They mostly ignore us anyways. And when they do, when, when you have a good journalist that wants to do a story on something and that you have the goods. I'm going to give them the goods, like, you know. So basically in all these situations, I'm not worried about it. I, I, you know what I'm worried about is that I lose interest in doing a show. That was what was happening. I was losing interest and at the same time I was watching Turtle Boy. Going shit, I want to cover this case that he's doing. This, this interests me. This is what I'm watching. And I was like, I can't cover this case without actually talking to Turtle Boy because it's, it's his fucking story. It'd be like what I get so pissed off at is when I cover a story and I get stolen, they never acknowledge me. They cover it the wrong way. They use my information against me, you know, it's just. So I wasn't going to do that to Turtle Boy. I was going to go to Turtle Boy. And that's what I'm starting to do on the show is I, I'm doing the show I want to do. I'm not, I'm not being censored by anybody. I'm not going to be told that I can do a show, that I can't do a show with this person or that person. No. I'm doing the show that interests me. And I find that when I do that, it interests a lot of other people too. So. I guess that would be my advice to any creators out there too. Follow your passion. Don't listen to your idiot friends that tell you you can't do something for a reason. You know, I'm not telling you to be like a total goofball, but if you know something is right and you want to do it and, and you're interested in it, go for it. It's a good comment. Imagine hating Turtle Boy so much, you're willing to besmirch an innocent woman and deny all facts to be contrarian to Turtle Boy. Yeah. And can you imagine that that hurts your credibility later? That's the thing. Like for me, I was silent on Turtle Boy. I wouldn't go against Turtle Boy because I knew he was right on a lot of shit. So my choice was to be silent and it's just dumb. And now I'm not going to be silent on it at all anymore. But. These folks are morons because people like Wendy Murphy and Coffin Daffer. Truth is coming out. It's already out and it's going to get worse for them. So. The more time goes on, Turtle Boy is going to be proven right and these folks are going to have no credibility. And that goes for the trolls too. A lot of the local trolls that we know, they're morons. They're the, they're the real local morons, the ones that think they know better. The ones who are called Mia Mooch. Mia Mooch, who's never borrowed a dollar from anybody, ever. Like I. I'm the guy who like probably if I get cancer again, I probably won't even go for chemo. You know what I mean? Like I don't want to even like. I just. It's so funny. Then this guy actually mooches off his family. Like we all know that, right? He, he doesn't work. He says he's retired. Is he really retired? But let's not talk about the trolls anymore. Oh, we're done tonight. I want to thank everyone for listening. I want to thank you for letting me air out all my bullshit tonight too. And, uh, I want to thank the callers and especially Rita and Nick. Amazing. Maureen Cokely. There were some other great calls too, some first time callers. I want to thank everyone. I even, excuse me. I even want to thank Nick, Nicholas Fiorello, because you know, I, I wasn't that nice to him and I think he took it pretty well. We're the Young Jerks. We will see you next time. I'm not sure when. But I'm pretty sure it'll be soon. Maybe even Friday night, Friday afternoon. I don't know. We'll see. We'll see. I have a very tight schedule. But I am going to be watching to see what happens on Friday morning at that court case. I'll be walking dogs, checking my phone all day. I'm looking forward to it. And, uh, hopefully there's going to be, you know, something, you know, good, uh, production, good show. Uh, from Nick and them and, and a lot of money raised on Friday night as well. I hope everyone has a good time. Be safe. And, uh, we'll see everyone real soon. Mike Crawford, Young Jerks, check it out. Thank you so much. For everything that we're doing together, especially the fun, the raising the money tonight. That feels good that I'm going to be able to send some money. To the Free Karen Reed Fund. So thank you, everyone. We'll see you next time. Mike Crawford, Young Jerks. Later.